All right. Good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome you all here. This is our regular city council meeting for January 3rd, 2023. Happy New Year. And we're going to go ahead and call a meeting order to order, and we're going to have our U.C. councillor Sidney Bell lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And now we will call.
Jay Frank?
Present.
Barbara Bynum?
Present.
Doug Laskell?
Present.
Jaden Reed?
Present.
Hey, Gilbertary?
Here.
Sidney Bell?
Here.
All City Councillors and City Councillors and Senators.
Thank you. And are there any changes to the addition, including additions or deletions?
Um, yeah, we are pulling item sixteen tonight, which is ordinance twenty-six-ten in the City's subdivision reason. Um, this afternoon, the applicant asked to pull it for now, um, to give him more time to work with, um, staff and the community. And I think.
Jason. So our planning manager, Jason Hartwell, would like to go ahead and make a comment concerning that.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and Mayor Portem. Um, I'm not sure if anyone in this audience is actually here for this item. I think we got the word out pretty, pretty well in the last couple hours. But, um, yeah, what the applicants decided to do for this is actually pull it off the agenda for this evening. They're working with, uh, some of the neighbors, uh, and as well as staff to, um, I think find some resolutions. Um, with that said, we don't have a scheduled date for the, uh, future hearing, but my card is going to be left on the back table, and I'm happy to essentially just inform people as we know more. So, um, that is that.
And there are no other changes?
Thank you. Um, did we do change it on the warning on the public notice? Do you have time for them?
I did not hear any warning.
Okay. In that case, we'll move on to item number five, call for public comment. Then, one moment, please. Let me read some language here first. Uh, the call for public comment agenda item is a time when concerned members of the community may publicly voice their concerns and discuss items of interest. Please note that no formal action will be taken on matters raised during this time. Comments made during this time should be addressed to the council and pertain to matters of the least general importance to the city and its operations. Please be aware that neither city council nor city staff are expected to respond or engage in discussion or debate. Personal attacks, disagreements, personnel and employment matters, use of profanity, or ethnic, racial, or gender-oriented slurs are prohibited, as is any disorderly conduct which violates state or legal law that shall not be permitted. We allow three minutes per person, and our city court, the U.C. picket was going to run the timer on that. So if he would, when you come up, please announce your name and address for the record.
Good evening. Uh, John Broadboks, seventeen forty-seven Aronton Street, Montrose. And I wanted to bring to the attention of the council something that's been kind of an ongoing issue in our neighborhood. Um, I am the president of the HOA that's involved, which is comprised of sixty-four homes, Village of Eagle Landing. Um, the issue that I wanted to again bring to your attention is, uh, a drainage issue in the guttering of the area of the intersection of Snuffles and Abrams. Uh, it has become, anytime there's freezing temperatures, it's become an ice dam and, quite frankly, a safety hazard, uh, for pedestrians. Uh, I don't know if it caused the cards to get very easily. Uh, I could show you a picture taken this, uh, Sunday morning. That was the first time it had not been entirely ice in two weeks. Uh, and part of our concern in the neighborhood is the lady that lives right on the corner of that, uh, intersection. Uh, she's over eight years old. She does not drive. She has to walk places. Uh, I know some of our neighbors have actually started ferrying her to the grocery store. But I, I've probably gotten more complaints since being president. They always come to me, uh, about this particular issue over the five years I've been president, uh, than any other. Uh, I had a discussion last year with a city employee, as I understand, is known with the city, but in the Public Works Department. Uh, he said they, they got it on their list. Um, and obviously, nothing's happened. About, I want to say a month and a half ago, I had a discussion with Jim Scheid, uh, and he said, yes, we definitely are aware of that particular intersection and that, that issue, and we don't have a good solution. That's ultimately what I got from that conversation. Uh, I suspect that whatever needs to be done to resolve this fact that there's a low point in the drainage there that causes pooling of water, liquid water in the summer, it's a lethal hazard, which isn't quite so bad as the, uh, again, I, I don't know how much you can see it, but after a lot of melting that happened, it ultimately was an ice dam for about eighty feet. That's very difficult for pedestrians to get around. And I guess one of the comments I'd like to make is that if it takes a bit of money, uh, I, I understand you have to plan for that, but we certainly, as a city, plan for capital projects of substantial cost. Uh, I can't believe this is the only intersection that has a problem like this.
I understand.
And I just feel like it's something that, something needs to be done.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Is there any other member of the public that would like to make a public comment at this time? Seeing none, we'll move on. Item number six, our consent agenda. And the consent agenda is all items under this heading. And we have two items, city council consideration of minutes over December sixth, twenty-twenty-two, regular city council meeting, and the December thirteenth, twenty-two, twenty-twenty-two, special city council meeting, and the December nineteenth, twenty-twenty-two, special city council meeting. And item B is the city council consideration of applicants, Richard Rogers, David Fisher, and Chad Huffman, for reappointment to the City of Montrose Planning Commission for terms that expire on December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-six. Does Mayor have to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Second.
Of a motion and a second approval consent agenda. Uh, roll call vote, please.
Jay Frank?
Yes.
Barbara Bynum?
Yes.
Doug Laskell?
Yes.
Jaden Reed?
Yes.
Hey, Gilbertary?
Yes.
How do you manage that?
Thank you. Moving on to the next item. Item number seven. Designation of the official posting location. City Council consideration of the designation of the City of Montrose website, www.cityofmontrose.org, as the official posting location for meeting notices with the bulletin boards in the lobby of City Hall and outside of City Hall as secondary locations for use in exigent or emergency circumstances. This is city clerk Lisa Millip.
Thank you, Mayor Frank. Let me slide show up here. Send my notes. So, under the cover of Sunshine Law, we are required to designate the official posting location for our meeting agendas at the first meeting, um, of each calendar year. We discussed the surprising of the December nineteen work session, and because of some unusual circumstances for twenty-twenty-three, city council asked to just for a general overview of some of the changes and unusual circumstances coming up. So the first change, um, since we're on the meeting room, we're aware that the city council chambers and public building is closed for renovations through March of this year. So city council meetings, as well as all municipal court and T court proceedings will be held in this room, which is the community room of the Public Safety Complex. This is at four-three-four South First Street, right across the street from City Hall. The planning commission, this park preservation commission, and Urban Revenal Authority will meet in the Centennial Meeting Room. That is at four-two-three South First Street, technically, but the entrance to that meeting room is from Centennial Plaza. There's also some changes to the city council meeting schedule this year. Out of the first four city council meetings and work sessions, there are Monday holidays for three of those groups of meetings. So just like yesterday was the designated holiday for New Year's Day, we had our work session today at ten a.m. We'll follow the same pattern for January sixteen, being Martin Peking Junior Day. The work session will be at ten a.m. on January seventeenth. President's Day falls on February twentieth, and so, um, our work session will be on, at ten a.m. on February twenty-first. Looking a little bit farther into the future, July fourth falls on a Tuesday, which is a city council meeting. So city council, um, tenderly re-enhancing that work session and regular meeting if possible. And then the only other holiday conflict would be Labor Day, which falls on Monday, September fourth, and we'll have that work session on Tuesday, September fifth. Getting back to our official posting locations, we always post our city council agendas we have, um, for, for many years on the City of Montrose. Those are available, um, along with packets, minutes, and video recordings on the public portal. Anything prior to September of twenty-twenty-one is available on the Archives Center, and there will be agendas, packets, and minutes. Um, and there is a link on the public portal to that archive, so they should be very easy to find. We also post our agendas, um, on the bulletin boards in City Hall. Right now, in City Hall, there's an interior bulletin board in the lobby, and we have an exterior bulletin board, um, out by the USS Montrose Bell. And, um, we're not proposing any changes, except that beginning of March of twenty-twenty-three, City Hall will be in a different building at four-hundred East Main Street. We are intending to have a bulletin board that's accessible twenty-four-seven in the best field for the ATM, and we will post all public meeting agendas at that location. Just so everyone is aware, live broadcasts and video recordings of city council meetings are available in several places on the City of Montrose website. They're on the Video Center and the Public Meetings Portal. They're also available on the City of Montrose YouTube channel and on Elevate Channel, uh, seven-nine-zero, and Charter Channel, one-ninety-one. But what we really want anyone to know is if they have any questions, they can't, they want to know where the meeting will be held, they're not finding the agenda, please contact the City Clerk's office. Um, that phone number isn't very easily, um, visible up there, but it's nine-seven-zero, two-four-zero, fourteen-thirty. You can call the fourteen-hundred number. They'll put you on contact with us. And, um, you can email cityclerk@cityofmontrose.org. We're happy to email agendas. Um, we're happy to give you a paper copy. Anything we can do to make the access easier. I am, um, happy to answer any questions, and you're not.
So for clarity, we're not changing anything from the way we've done things since two thousand and four. And the one thing we had a, a comment about, we had discussed, and we would like to think about is the way that it's worded with the secondary positions being for exigent or emergency circumstances makes it sound like we're only going to post things there in an emergency. But that is not the case. We do and continue to post all of our data, all of our notices, all of our bulletins, in all three locations, the website, bulletin board, in lobby, and the bulletin board by the ships.
That is correct. And that really was taken from the Sunshine Law. Um, council, of course, we defer to, uh, Mr. Morris, but council can continue to operate as we are. They can also, um, designate the bulletin boards as official posting places, but, um, I believe the other meeting law requires that they be posted on the list.
So this is something that is more of a housekeeping item? That we have to actually, we, we have to notice this official designation every year?
The first regular meeting of the year, annually. That's, that's the new section.
Any other questions for the council?
I think that the way we're doing it is acceptable based on the fact that, uh, we're going to be in flux for a little while with the new buildings there and this building here. So wherever we can get out these notices, I think it's appropriate.
Absolutely. While we're in transition, um, I, and I just think just posting both locations.
Very good. Any public comment? If you would come to podium, state your name and address for the record, please.
Thanks. Excuse me. Dave Stockton, three zeros over nine, quick draw. I had this long-winded thing, I would say, about three minutes and fifteen seconds, but I understand that's right, as, uh, as I've witnessed, official postings being on bulletin board, things of that sort. I have a issue with official posting being declared on the webpage, uh, particularly regarding council meeting minutes, or council meeting notification when the, uh, charter says that the official designation will be in front of City Hall. And that's, that's my big gripe. So I'm, I'd love to, uh, to have council agree that official postings will be on the webpage when that's, uh, confirmed with what our charter says. That's pretty much one of my whole issues with this.
Thank you. Any other comments? In that case, any other motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move to designate the City of Montrose website as the official posting location for meeting notices with the bulletin boards at City Hall's secondary locations for use in exigent or emergency circumstances.
I'll second that.
Motion, that is second. A discussional motion. Roll call vote, please.
Jay Frank?
Yes.
Barbara Bynum?
Yes.
Doug Laskell?
Yes.
Jaden Reed?
Yes.
Hey, Gilbertary?
Yes.
How do you manage that?
Thank you. Moving on to item number eight. The Intergovernmental Agreement with the Montrose Recreation District for Shared Services. City Council consideration of intergovernmental agreement between the City of Montrose and Montrose Recreation District regarding shared services. This is definitely a city.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. You reviewed this proposed intergovernmental agreement between the City and the Montrose Recreation District at the December nineteenth, twenty-twenty-two work session. The brief summary is that the City and the M.R.B. enter into a agreement every year in order to make the best use of our citizens' funding and our shared resources. So this agreement outlines the way that the Rec. District and the City of Montrose partner during the year. This year, we have minimal changes to the agreement. Uh, they're outlined in the memo, and we discussed them at the work session, although I'm happy to answer any questions you may have about them. And just one mention that came up under the Facility Services section of this agreement, um, within letter C, it looks like there's a typo for the number. Um, it, it is three thousand seven hundred dollars. The way that the red line works and strikes through the four, strikes through right where the four crosses. So please note that it is indeed a red line. The new total this year is three thousand seven hundred dollars. I see Jeremy is here from the Rec. District. Thank you for coming. I'm going to talk to him at the work session as well, but if you have questions, please.
Thank you, Jeremy. Any comments? No. Very good. Any questions or comments from council?
I think it's had a very good work session.
I think this was a very well-covered work session, and I think it is one of those just very obvious mutual beneficial agreements. Nothing else, uh, except public comment. Any member of the public? And seeing none, we'll adjourn motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the intergovernmental agreement between the City of Montrose and the Montrose Recreation District regarding shared services as presented.
Second. Mr. Gilbertary, second. Any discussional motion? Roll call vote, please.
Jay Frank?
Yes.
Barbara Bynum?
Yes.
Doug Laskell?
Yes.
Jaden Reed?
Yes.
Hey, Gilbertary?
Yes.
How do you manage that?
Thank you. Moving on to item number nine. City Council consideration of ordinance twenty-six oh seven on second reading, in accordance with the City of Montrose, Colorado, vacating portion of public utility easement as city engineer discovered.
I hit the, uh, X button. And, uh, so you can remember, um, no changes since the second reading. This is, uh, we're working on a water line upside the project, um, taking a movement that runs through the center of a property. Uh, it's the old, uh, the gravel supply area now. It used to be the moving rental place. Um, taking that easement from the center of the property and moving it to the eastern side. Um, this is, it's important that this is continued upon, uh, the owner, I'm getting through all the agreements with the owner, and, uh, we wait to record this until all of that takes place, the new line is in place, and we should vacate the old. So, um, no changes since the last two times we talked about it. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for council? Second, some questions. Very good. Except for the comment, there are a public portion to address this. Seeing none, adjourn motion.
I make a motion to adopt ordinance twenty-six oh seven, on second reading, as presented.
Second. Motion is second. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Jay Frank?
Yes.
Barbara Bynum?
Yes.
Doug Laskell?
Yes.
Jaden Reed?
Yes.
Hey, Gilbertary?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on to item number ten. City Council consideration of ordinance twenty-six oh eight on second reading, in accordance with the City of Montrose, Colorado, amending Title III, Chapter One, Section Six and Sec. Seven, correcting a codification error. This is Assistant City Attorney Chris Davison.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council. Uh, this is the second reading. I think it has changed from the first reading. Um, there's no substantive change within the code. It's only moving section, uh, three dash one, dash seven F, two, three, one, six F. Uh, it's verba-, uh, verbatim moved, so nothing's changed. Just better, please. Any questions?
Any questions for council? Consider. The public comment. In that case, we adjourn motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance twenty-six oh eight on second reading, as presented.
Second. Motion on the second. Roll call vote, please.
Jay Frank?
Yes.
Barbara Bynum?
Yes.
Doug Laskell?
Yes.
Jaden Reed?
Yes.
Hey, Gilbertary?
Yes.
How do you manage that?
Thank you. Moving on to item number eleven, ordinance twenty-six oh nine on second reading. City Council consideration of ordinance twenty-six oh nine on second reading, ordinance of the City of Montrose, Colorado, disconnecting the property at six-seven-three-six-five Sunshine Road. This is planner two, William Reese.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. Uh, this is the second reading of an ordinance disconnecting the property, also known as de-annexation. Uh, there have been no changes since the first reading. Uh, the property is located at six-seven-three-six-five Sunshine Road, uh, and the city received a request to remove the property from city limits and revert jurisdiction back to Montrose County. Uh, this property was originally annexed into city limits in two thousand and eight and was part of a larger annexation known as the Amerida Edition. Uh, this disconnection request came from the property owners, Gary and Diane Bolts. The property is approximately twenty-five point eight-two acres in size. Uh, disconnection requests are not very common, but we do look at them on a case-by-case basis, so this ordinance should not be seen as unprecedented. Uh, in this specific instance, the property is not currently served by city utilities and services. The property is served by Tri-County Water and is outside of the city water service area. Uh, it's also not served by city sewer. General rule, development of earth with, uh, approximately four hundred feet of an existing sewer line, property would need to be connected to sewer, and if not already annexed, would need to be run within the city limits. Uh, this property is roughly over two thousand feet from the existing city sewer line, and even more would factor in lack of easements and work. Uh, for these reasons, city staff is recommending approval of the disconnection request. Uh, we find that there will not be a negative financial impact to the request, uh, to the city because of this request. Of course, a future property owner could apply to, uh, re-annex the property should conditions change in the future. Staff recommends approval of ordinance twenty-six oh nine. Happy to answer any questions.
Quick, any questions for council?
You know, actually, I think the only other time that we had someone requesting de-annexation is we made sure the applicant understood that they would not be able to vote in city elections or city ballot issues just so that they knew that upfront, and that wasn't a problem with Lisa's office in April of twenty-twenty-four. So, I, you know, I mean, I'm sure with the planning department you're discussing, and with engineering you're discussing sewers and all of that, and I just don't want that to come back and surprise someone and make them mad that they weren't filled that or something. So can, can somebody tell the applicant that so that they're not surprised?
Yeah, I'm happy to, uh, discuss that with any, uh, disconnected requests.
Very good. Any public comment? Seeing none, adjourn motion.
I make a motion to adopt ordinance twenty-six oh nine on second reading, as presented.
I'll second that.
Motion is second. Roll call vote, please.
Jay Frank?
Yes.
Barbara Bynum?
Yes.
Doug Laskell?
Yes.
Jaden Reed?
Yes.
Hey, Gilbertary?
Yes.
How do you manage that?
Thank you. Moving on to item number twelve. Resolution twenty-two-three dash zero-one. City Council consideration of resolution twenty-two-three dash zero-one, setting February seventh, twenty-twenty-three, as a hearing date for climb addition annexation. This is again William Reese.
Thank you again. Um, we recently received your request to annex a property in city limits. Uh, in accordance with state regulations, we do need to present a resolution to set hearing date for the official annexation hearing. Uh, the applicant is a property owner and applying, and we are calling this the climb addition. Uh, we did discuss this application briefly at the December nineteenth State Council work session. Tonight, you are considering a resolution which will set the official hearing date, which we are proposing for February seventh. Uh, hearing must take place between thirty and sixty days from the date of the resolution being passed, and February seventh is the earliest city council meeting within that time period. Uh, the property is within the city's urban growth boundary and city sewer area, as well as Tri-County Water Service Area. Property is about one acre in size, uh, and is on the southeast corner of the intersection of the sixty-six-hundred road and the Grab Fourth Road, also known as six-seventy-five sixty-six-hundred road. At least one six of the property borders existing city boundaries as required by the city. Uh, the existing city limit is just to the north of the property and is over ten H R, being affected by the housing residential district. Yep, and, uh, same zoning that matched adjacent city properties. Uh, other adjacent properties are outside of city limits, and the applicant will still report the planning commission for a zoning hearing on January eleventh. Uh, here is the annexation plaque, uh, as is required by the state, at least on six of the perimeter, does border existing city limits, and indicated by the hash marks on the property line. Uh, according to our comprehensive plan, this property is listed as residential mixed occupancy low, which provides primarily for single-family homes as well as duplexes for small town homes. Now, this is the predominant pattern of existing residential development in Montrose. The property is within growth areas, which indicate more proximity to existing infrastructure as there is that exists in sewer line supply. Uh, in conclusion, the property meets the criteria set by both the city and the state for annexation. Uh, annexation agreement had been drafted and signed by the applicant due to the small size and the annexation impact report was not required. City staff recommends the adoption of resolution twenty-two-three, vote one, set the hearing date for February seventh of twenty-twenty-three. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Just to note that this is a, merely a procedural action on the part of the council. There's no such issues involved in this.
Correct. You're not, uh, approving the annexation itself with zoning, but rather the, uh, hearing date.
Yeah, I just wanted to make that clear.
And because it is a procedural item, no public comment is required, but requested. So we adjourn motion to adopt resolution twenty-two-three dash oh-one.
I'll make the resolution. Adopt resolution twenty-eight, twenty-three, oh-one, as presented.
Second. Roll call vote, please.
Jay Frank?
Yes.
Barbara Bynum?
Yes.
Doug Laskell?
Yes.
Jaden Reed?
Yes.
Hey, Gilbertary?
Yes.
How do you manage that?
Thank you. Moving on to item thirteen. Cedar View Subdivision amended preliminary plaque number three. City Council consideration of the Cedar View Subdivision amended preliminary plaque number three. This is once again William Reese.
Thank you again. Uh, as stated, this is the subdivision application of the Cedar View subdivision. As you may know, part of the Cedar View subdivision has already been built out approximately thirty percent. Uh, however, a preliminary plaque is valid for five years, However, a preliminary plaque is valid for five years, and any remaining unbilled portions of the subdivision would need to come back as a preliminary plaque after that timeframe. The subdivision is located east of South Hillcrest Avenue, excuse me, South Hillcrest Drive. The property highlighted here is in red. This is southeast conjunction of Hillcrest and Main Street. The property is approximately 17.32 acres in size. This proposal with flat 86 single-family residential lots will take up about 13.39 acres of the site. Property is located in the R6 medium density slash manufactured housing district. It's adjacent to other properties that are also R6, as well as R3A medium high-density, P2 hybrid commercial, P3 general commercial, and P public district. As mentioned before, when a preliminary plaque is approved, that allows the applicant to complete infrastructure improvements as they work towards the final plaque. It's pretty common for partial completion of the plaque before the five-year timeframe, which requires amended preliminary plaque. You'll presumably see the final plaque or platters product in the near future. I have presented this slide before, but city staff does look to section 475 of the Montrose Municipal Code for use of the applications. It's sent to external agencies for review as well. Notably, we look for conformance of the master plan and zoning, the topography, drainage soils, et cetera, the availability of utilities, compatibility with natural features, and traffic flow, designated access to emergency services protection, and impacts on various schools. According to our future land use map, this area is listed as residential mixed density medium. This suggests a variety of housing types and densities, ranging from single-family homes to multifamily development. The underlying zoning of the subdivision dictates the allowable uses and densities. The proposed subdivision meets the size requirements of the R6 zoning district. Manufactured housing meeting our performance standards is also allowed in the zoning. Here is the first page of the plaque itself. First page consists of the plateaus and certificates as required on all of our plaques, and the second page shows the actual subdivision itself. As mentioned, the 86 single-family lots are being proposed with this preliminary plaque as well as the necessary rights of way dedicated to the city. Several open space tracks were also proposed. Two things are worth noting here, I think. There was a minor subdivision done in 2020, including a portion of the property. So, this plaque actually proposes fewer lots than previous preliminary plaques. Also worth noting, previous plaques dedicated a sub portion of the subdivision to the city for uses of public park. Finally, here is the proposed basic plan for the subdivision. As you know, the final plaque can and often does plaque just portions of the preliminary plaque. This proposed four phases. The proposal includes four phases, but this is not binding. Again, the actual final plaques may or may not align with this basic plan. So, in conclusion, the proposed subdivision is in compliance with the subdivision regulations and the comprehensive plan. The proposal meets the intent of the underlying zoning district. Staff recommends approval of the preliminary plaque would be standard condition that we recommend for all preliminary plaques. Happy to answer any questions?
One question I have is that, if Evans Street is stubbed in, it's going to have to require that that street be finished before that work gets done in the subdivision.
I'm just looking here, which one is Evans Street?
It's the main thoroughfare through the center of the subdivision.
Yes, that portion has been already been dedicated as far as the completion, if not individually for the little people. Yeah, so each future filing would include its adjacent streets. So, yeah, it looks like they're stringing certain pieces that that was dedicated out. I don't know if that was the intent of maybe that connecting more quickly with adjacent development would be my guess from the past over before any amount of time, but yeah, as adjacent lots are built, by getting a lot without legal access, and so, and our code requires it as well, so they would do the streets as necessary depending on the basing as they continue to build that.
Any other questions? In that case, we would accept public comment?
I make a motion to approve the Cedar View subdivision amended.
He's excited. And seeing no public comment, I would entertain that motion.
Tell me to start over?
Yes, I do.
If you're making a motion to approve the Cedar View subdivision amended preliminary plaque number three expressly conditioned upon the city staff ensuring that all policies, regulations, ordinances, and municipal code provisions are met, and that the applicant adequately addressed all of staff's concerns prior to execution of the final plaque. The city staff is not authorized by this approval to execute the final plaque prior to all conditions being satisfied.
Do we have a second? Thank you. Any discussion on that rather than a paper? Roll call vote.
Jay Frank?
Yes.
Barbara Bynum? Yes. Douglas Bell?
Yes.
Jay Daydream?
Yes.
Eddie Laver?
Yes.
Kathy Nance.
Moving on to item 14. Painted Wall Subdivision Amendment to the Bridges at Black Canyon Plan Development. City Council consideration of this painted wall subdivision amendment to the bridges at Black Canyon Plan Development, amendment to Block 2200, Lock 2200, which is originally approved for 24-unit multifamily development to eight lot, single-family development. And once again, William Reese.
Thank you again. One thing to note here, items 14 and 15 tonight are technically two separate actuarial items, and so they should be considered and put together separately. However, because they are associated with the same subdivision, are one representation for both items. This is a proposed subdivision of a lot within the Bridgehead Golf Course Development. Property is located adjacent to Painted Wall Lane and Hotel Road. The property is approximately 3.32 acres in size and is zoned as R3A medium high-density district. However, the lot was approved for a 24-unit multifamily development within the Bridgehead PD. Because this proposal would alter the plan development, this required a plan development amendment, which is a separate document, but obviously linked. The amendment will request a reduction in density to an eight lot, single-family development. Of course, I just showed a slide. Along with the subdivision itself, the PD amendment follows the same process, so tonight we have a preliminary PD amendment. When the subdivision is ready for a final plaque, the applicant will also bring forward a final PD amendment. As previously mentioned, we do look to sections 475, subsection A2, the code for our subdivision review standards. I won't go too in-depth on that over again. This area is listed as residential mixed density medium, as before, the success uses ranging from single-family to multifamily development. The R3A zoning district is intended to provide for single-family duplex and multifamily development with intermediate density. Surrounding properties are part zoned R3A, R2 low-density, and R3 medium-density, as well as properties outside of city limits. And finally, here is the preliminary plaque. As I said, the plaque proposes to divide the property into eight individually available lots, also included are the required plaque heads and certificates. And here is the PD amendment proposing a reduction in density to a previously approved 24-unit development. As mentioned, these are officially two separate applications, and the PD amendment should be considered first as the preliminary plaque is not possible without the preliminary plan development. Staff finds that these applications are in compliance with the comprehensive plan and subdivision regulations and meet the intent of the R3A zoning district. Staff recommends the additional approval of the capable subdivision PD amendment and preliminary plaque. Happy to answer any questions?
Any questions from the council? Seeing none? Except public comment, as any member of the public wishes to address council office. And seeing none, I would entertain a motion. Let me do this, we did it. No, I'm just going to make you know that it's the tide.
Consider making a motion to approve the Painted Wall Subdivision Amendment to the Bridges at Black Canyon Plan Development expressly conditioned upon the city staff ensuring that all policies, regulations, ordinances, and municipal code provisions are met, and the applicant adequately addressing all of staff's concerns prior to execution of the final plaque. City staff is not authorized by this approval to execute the final plaque prior to all conditions being satisfied.
I'll second that.
Your motion is second. Comment? Discussion on the motion? Seeing none, roll call vote.
Jay Frank?
Yes.
Barbara Bynum? Yes. Douglas Bell?
Yes.
Jay Daydream?
Yes.
Eddie Laver?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on to item 15, which is continuation of the same item. And the presentation that Mr. Reese has already given, we accept public comment on item number 15. In that case, I would entertain a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the Painted Wall Subdivision preliminary plaque expressly conditioned upon city staff ensuring that all policies, regulations, ordinances, and municipal code provisions are met, and that the applicant adequately addresses all of staff's concerns prior to the execution of the final plaque. The city staff is not authorized by this approval to execute the final plaque prior to all conditions being satisfied.
I'll second that. Second. Discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Jay Frank?
Yes.
Barbara Bynum? Yes. Douglas Bell?
Yes.
Jay Daydream?
Yes.
Eddie Laver?
Yes.
Kathy Nance.
Thank you. And moving on to item 17.
Sorry, body camera. Don't know why. Something's going on around here somewhere.
Good to know we're all connected.
I will stop recording you.
Then 616 has been moved to item 17. It's a real estate contract. City Council consideration for a contract to convey real property at Black Canyon Golf Course. And this is planning manager James Harlock and city attorney Ben Morris.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I actually visited on this earlier this morning, so it's, I'll just kind of provide a refresher here, but the item I have tonight is related to a real estate contract proposing to convey 0.62 acres from the City of Montrose to James Renfro. James Renfro is the property owner of 2400 Callaby Lane, that's the property that has the name with a star on it. And then adjacent to the south is the Black Canyon Golf Course. So, Mr. Renfro actually approached the city probably about a year ago to acquire a small piece of property that's technically part of the golf course, but's currently unmaintained and undeveloped, and they're directly used into the south. So, this just shows kind of a closer zoomed-in area. As outlined in red is the current property boundary of Mr. Renfro, and as outlined in blue there is the proposed area to be acquired. As mentioned, it's a total area of 0.62 acres. You can kind of see it here just in the aerial, it lacks vegetation, it's not really maintained in any way by the city. So, Mr. Renfro actually, you know, he went forth to the city to state that he wanted to retain that for liability reasons. This slide just represents essentially what the new property boundary will look like. So, what Mr. Renfro is proposing is not to essentially create a whole new build block for this, it will actually just be encompassed into his current parcel area. This area, again, is not proposed for any future golf course development for the city, quite frankly, less than the remainder of the city. And then lastly, I showed this earlier this morning as well, but this is just the plaque map. This has been staff reviewed and essentially conditionally approved, so there's really no issues that staff sees with this moving forward. And that condition essentially is, as you're aware, when the city is looking to dissolve or sell, and it has to go forward with the City Council's final approval. And that's really why it's important tonight. So, really what we're looking at this evening is just the authority of you as mayor to essentially sign off on the real estate contract. This will actually move forward to two other hearings. There'll be a first reading that's tentatively scheduled for the January 17, and a second that will follow on February 3. This is essentially your authority to sign the council contract. So, I'll look to other colleagues, if they have anything to add, but I think that's all that.
Thank you. Any other questions from council?
I think they were all had a quickly answered this morning, and you were accessing the same.
In that case, we would accept public comment? And seeing none, entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion to authorize the mayor to sign a real estate contract as presented.
Second. Motion is second. Roll call vote, please.
Jay Frank?
Yes.
Barbara Bynum? Yes. Douglas Bell?
Yes.
Jay Daydream?
Yes.
Eddie Laver?
Yes.
Kathy Nance.
Thank you. And moving on to item number 18. Emergency culvert replacement authorization. City Council consideration of $81,400 of expenditures to replace two bridge culverts, both of which serve as entrances to the Medigate neighborhood. This is public works manager James Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. So, has been no changes since we discussed this at work session, but it has been a while. I mean, this was beginning in December when we last discussed it. But as I said, it is for repair culverts entering the Medigate neighborhood, and it's near 6,800 local. This has been a problem we've been dealing with most of this year. The irrigation canal that runs through this area is difficult to shut off. It's very long and serves a large area, so we were able to limp through the season and keeping that and remove the culverts mid-season. We utilized a temporary bridge that we used from the Montrose County. And they were very nice and helping us out with the project unless you have a bridge. And we're kind of switching back and forth between the crossings, which everyone was most stable to use throughout the season. And so, we're now bringing this to you, even though the actual cost of the repairs and the sizing of the culverts that are needed. And so, we've already begun work on the project. We've obtained authorization to purchase materials needed and have replaced one of the two already, with the goal, obviously, finishing the other one before irrigation returns in the spring. And we're bringing this request to you at this time to ratify those expenses, and they're well-known now in parallel, and we're not sure this, and now it's just, our in-house crews will be doing this work and finishing the last half of this month. And so, another change, there hasn't been no changes since we last discussed. I mean, I've answered any questions, pictures, I could tell a pretty good story, but yeah, be added.
Attorney members of the public that haven't accessed those, who are actually considering guiding tours through, for spelunking through this?
And I guess it's an advantage for us to be able to do that when the ditch is not wet?
Yeah. And it's essential. Very difficult, but yes.
The temporary repairs look really good. Your streets division did a great job making that work.
They did. A lot of collaboration, a lot of work. Our street division has done very well.
And kudos to your staff responding to that, such a prompt and efficient manner. Very good. In that case, is there any other questions or comments for Mr. Shaw? Seeing none, would accept public comment? And seeing none, entertain a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to authorize $81,400 in expenditures for the replacement of two culverts as presented.
Second. Motion is second. Discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Jay Frank?
Yes.
Barbara Bynum? Yes. Douglas Bell?
Yes.
Jay Daydream?
Yes.
Eddie Laver?
Yes.
Kathy Nance?
Thank you. And moving on to item number 19, number 19, staff reports. Is there any members of our staff that wish to give us any updates or comments today? In that case, we'll go on to youth, city council comments, or youth council or city belt chancellor. Tell us what's going on with youth council.
We took two nursing home visits to the nursing home volunteer and spent some time with the residents there, and we hung out with them and played some games. And then, we completed our seven days of service social media event on our Instagram account. We did a seven days of service where you could help out your family, your friends, or around the community. And then, we are starting to plan our wrap the record event, but we have no set date for that yet. And that's it.
Very good. Excited to see our youth city council being very active. In that case, city council comments?
Well, I'd like to thank the planning staff. I asked for some information. I asked for some information earlier today, and by the time I got home and got settled, I had the information that I was needing. I wanted to thank Ann and the planning manager. Chase?
Chase, yes.
Okay. For the quick response, because it's, to me, the issue of the study, the housing study is real important, so I wanted to thank you both for keeping me informed. And I do have another request want to add. This other resoning to a, it's according to the letter, they were talking about a hundred and ninety-two multifamily units for in the future. If you could keep me updated on that, I'd like to, because I really think that we do need affordable and housing for the community.
I'm sure I'll keep the entire council.
Yep. We can. And just to mention on that one, I'll just say that it is still possibly a pending application for you. So any information that staff shared would need to be shared with the entire council because you'll be making a decision on that application.
I want to avoid exhortative communication, right?
Right, and that was, that's referring to the season reszone for anyone listening here. And yeah, right now we don't have a schedule date for it, but it'll likely come a frame at some point in the coming months if this is future.
Thank you. Any other council comments?
I would say happy new year to the council and the staff, and I'm really looking forward to this year. I think we've got a lot of positive things in progress and a lot of work, but the opportunity that has to be accomplished with the citizens of Montrose.
I think twenty-twenty-two was a very good year. The staff just grows above and beyond and really made it a pleasure to work with you and provided us with such great background information on everything you've done that makes our job a lot easier.
And kudos to getting the room set up for this meeting, the meeting tonight and this morning. I know it's a work in progress. It's not quite there, but I know it was a team effort with the technology and the logistics of getting us here for a couple of months, so thanks to everyone.
I guess we have to thank the chief for allowing us to use it.
I don't know what you call it, community. Not that.
Well, if we want to use his office later on, we might have a different discussion.
I had a great story of his staff doing a great job for us.
Yes, absolute kudos to all of our IT staff. That was a lot of work for a very short notice. Thank you. And with that, would you entertain a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
We are adjourned.